Here, poor boy. You're not going to split some of that?
Yeah, that's pretty awful.
Good signal.
That was Wade's signal.
I know it. Good move.
All right, we've got Tony Kellerman from Sacred Heart Church here tonight to do our invocation. If everyone please rise.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Gracious God, as we approach the day in this country where we give you thanks, Thanksgiving Day, help us to be mindful that it is not just one day a year. It is every day that we should give you thanks, every day, for all the gifts that you give us, the talents that you give each one of us. Individually, we all have different talents and strengths. Help us to be mindful of the creation that you have given us, to be thankful of that, for the bounty that we have here in this country, the beauty of this country, the diversity of this country, all gifts of your grace to us. Once again, help us to be mindful of these, the talents and gifts that you give all of us, the counsel, so that they can make wise decisions for each of us, and the rest of us to help them carry out those decisions for the betterment of all. Through all this, we ask in your name, through Jesus Christ, your Lord, who lives and reigns with you in the Holy Spirit, God forever and ever, amen.
Amen.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, call the meeting to order at 6:02. Roll call?
Commissioner Kirkpatrick, here. Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Commissioner Carnes?
Here.
Commissioner Cruz?
Here.
Mayor Downs?
Here.
Approval of minutes for motion and vote, regular meeting minutes from October 28th of 2024. There are no questions or concerns, would entertain a motion and second to approve as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cruz. Roll call?
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Mayor Downs?
Yes.
We have no Treasurers report tonight, approval of bills to be paid, same thing here, if there are no questions or concerns, would entertain a motion and second to approve as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkpatrick, and second by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call?
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor Downs?
Yes.
All right, we have no proclamations, guests, appointments, consent agenda, or public agenda. On the ordinances and resolutions, we have Resolution 2024 R-10-04, which is a resolution authorizing acceptance of proposal for asbestos abatement, and this is for debate and public display. In your guys' packet, there was three companies that bid. As you remember, last time we tabled this, because we didn't have the final air clearances weren't included in the bids, two of them have now done so, one is not. Got one bid for $15,300, which does include all of that, one for...
Eighty-five.
Yeah, eighty-five hundred, which does not, and then what's the total on that other one that's not?
The eighty-five hundred does include the air clearance.
Oh, it does?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. And then the one, I need those numbers, I need to add them up. And then one for $7,070, as well does include that, correct Ruth?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so this is, again, this will be on public display for two weeks till our next meeting. Would entertain, well, and what do you guys think? I would entertain a motion and second to go with the lowest one, which is the $7,070, and does include the final air clearances on the ones that are, that do require it from the EPA. Any questions?
I agree.
All right, you guys want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kirkpatrick. Roll call?
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Mayor Downs?
Yes.
Is A&amp;A Abatement LLC. A&amp;A Abatement, yeah, they're from Ducoy. All right, next is Resolution 2024 R-10-05, resolution authorizing a business district agreement between George Harris and Lynn Wright Harris in the city of Ducoy. This is for final approval. You guys will remember from last meeting, George and Lynn were both here, and Jeff gave us a rundown of what they're doing, so they're asking for $25,000, correct Jeff? On a $100,000 project, and that's standard to our, what we've kind of stuck to for several years now, so eager to see them get that open back up and have another restaurant on the south side of town. If there are no questions or concerns, we entertain a motion and second for final approval.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Cruz, and second by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call?
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Mayor Downs?
Yes.
Resolution 2024 R-11-01, resolution authorizing repair of the treatment plant from Parkson, and this is for debate and public display. Ruth, can we give a quick rundown on what this?
This is to replace more of those headers, I think we've done half the project, this will be the rest of them, $24,566.
This will get us to the end then?
Should, yes, for this repair.
Wade, you got anything to add?
Jeff does a real good job of finding the, trying to find the best deal we can for those, and we, they replaced the two, and then they can shut that down to replace these two, so it all would work out, and we needed it.
Okay, anybody else? If not, would entertain a motion and second to put that on public display?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Cruz, second by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call?
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Mayor Downs?
Yes.
Resolution 2024 R-11-02, is resolution authorizing redevelopment agreement with Annie Spiller for 115 East Main Street, and this is for debate and public display. Jeff, I'm guessing you've got some details for us?
Good evening. Somewhat of a complicated project to, and we have to do some demolition work, and sometimes it's very difficult to get prices and quotes for folks, because we don't know exactly what we're going to find when we get into the building. This is a, there's, Resolution O-2 and O-3 are tied together, they're hooked together. O-2 discusses a redevelopment agreement with Antrimette Spiller, Annie Spiller. It involves the removal of the building at 115 East Main, the, where she will contract herself for the, for this purpose, she will bring the money to the project herself, and in a traditional TIF deal, she'll be reimbursed through the TIF program for the removal, the demolition, the removal of debris, and landfilling of the debris in a manner that's consistent with state law. We have done our best to anticipate the cost of this project, we anticipate it to be $60,000. This resolution does allow for, within his judgment, the mayor to do adjusting if it's necessary, since we don't know exactly where we're at when we get into this, we have done a pretty good job of ballparking this. Upon completion, she will be reimbursed $48,000 through the TIF program, she will have what we traditionally call skin in the game, in the amount of $12,000, which is an affordable amount, which has been determined, which is something we have to do when we go above the 25 percent, we have to establish what the capabilities are to repay some of it, and so she does have interest in this. The way that it'll work is she will receive a loan through the Ducoy Community Development Corporation for the $60,000, when the project is finished, the city will reimburse $48,000, which will be used to reduce the loan, the temporary loan to DCDC, leaving the difference of $12,000 for her to finance, and the development corporation then will finance that, that over a period of time. So it's a complicated little arrangement, but it works. Questions?
Nope. Does anybody got any questions for Jeff? You know, just, Jeff, thanks to you and Ruth and Jill, we worked on this with Annie for a couple of months, Annie, thanks for working with us, and I think we got a good deal here, so, any idea on timeline of...
Well, we can't, you know, we, this is going to be on a public display tonight, and then there's the question of contracting, the, the critical element, there's two elements, when we find the contractor, it's going to do the work, one is securing the appropriate security insurance, and we want to make sure that certain things are covered, which we have a right to look at through this, through this agreement. Secondly, we have to, we have to rent equipment that is not in Ducoy to take this down, it's called a long reach backup, we essentially have to wait our turn, that's where the, where the time will be, it won't be in taking the building down, it will be in how long it takes for that piece of equipment to arrive on the back of an 18-wheeler into town, okay?
Okay. Okay, we need a motion and second to put that on public display.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkpatrick, second by Commissioner Cruz. Roll call?
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Mayor Downs?
Yes.
First time, three people have all shouted.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, and then the last one is Resolution 2024 R-11-03, resolution authorizing DCDC agreement with Annie Spiller, and this is also for debate and public display, I think Jeff already referenced this, do you have anything else you need to add, or?
No, this is, other than this is, this is set up identically to the way we did the Ruth program.
Okay, all right, got it. If there are no questions or concerns, would entertain a motion and second on that one?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kirkpatrick. Roll call?
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor Downs?
Yes.
Sorry, you worked on it.
Don't believe we have any other business commissioners comments? Kayla?
Nothing from me.
Ian?
Nothing.
Wade?
Nothing.
Mike?
Nothing.
Jill?
Nothing.
Just a couple of things, I had a good Veterans Day parade yesterday, and good weather, good attendance, and things at the park, and VFW were well attended as well, so thank you to all the veterans, you know, a day late, and we should be able to say that every day of the year, because we would not be here without them. Have a couple of things, holiday parade is November 30th, and we'll have another meeting between now and then, but I wanted to get this out there, tree lighting at 6:00 PM, and the parade at 6:30. If you want to participate in the parade, please call the water office to sign up, and Ruth and her team in there will help you do that. There is a, the Ducoy Run Club is a thing that kind of started a couple of months ago, and they're hosting a Holiday Lights 5K at the fairgrounds on 1126. And registration is at six, and the race is at seven, so it's going to be kind of a cool thing at nighttime run-through with the Christmas lights on, so go to Facebook and search them out if you're interested in participating in that. And lastly, congratulations to our high school cross-country team, who had four runners at State over the weekend, two boys and two girls, and had a couple of personal records, I believe, so hats off to them, and a couple of them are finishing out their career at State, so always very proud of our high school athletes, and volunteers, and everybody who helps out in the community or makes an impact. Anybody in the crowd? Yes, ma'am?
Do we have any update yet?
You please come up to the podium and state your name.
Yes, my name is Patsy Teeteller, I've been here before, okay, I was wondering to see if we got any update on North Division Street yet. I know you said you was going to send him a letter, I haven't gotten no return with anybody, the raccoons are getting horrible, my downstairs apartment is starting to get that smell of raccoon species in there, and it's, I don't want it to get out of control here, I don't want my tenant to have to move, I don't want to have to, you know, it's bad for him, and it's just starting to get that smell in there, so I was wondering where we were on this, because you said you was going to send a letter, and it's already been past 15 days, and I haven't heard back from nobody, so...
I did send the letter, had to wait 15 days, I've now filed the lawsuit in Perry County Circuit Court, I have to serve everybody, which is ongoing right now, the sheriff does that, and they have 30 days to respond, so the clock's still ticking, I'm moving as quickly as I can, but with the law, with the law allows.
Okay, so how long will it be for, like, his 30 days, I mean?
The day he gets served, he has 30 days from that, he may have already been served, I don't know.
You don't know?
I sent that to the sheriff's department, and they eventually tell me when he got served, he could have already been served, sometimes it takes him a couple of weeks to get back to me, but when he's served, that will be the day his 30 days begin.
Okay, but I won't know when he's been served, or anything?
It's public record at the courthouse.
Okay.
The lawsuit is, anybody can look at it.
All right.
So you're more than welcome to look at the courthouse, circuit clerk's office, and it will tell you everything you need to know as far as when he served and things like that.
Okay, I was just wondering where we, where we were, because I haven't heard anything yet, so, I knew you said what you was going to be doing for me.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? No? All right, well, I'm good, we need a motion and second to adjourn at 6:16.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cruz. Roll call?
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Mayor Downs?
Yes.